So moved.
Second. Travis. Gareth. Yes. Johnson.
Yeah.
Steve.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
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 To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
The Republic, so we just say one nation.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comments section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of policy two oh and policy eight colon three oh available upon sign in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. And there are none. Moving on to our information reports. We have two overnight field trips.
One is very important to Board Member Kalawa. Want to support that in any way, Avery, Skills USA State Championship. Very exciting. And equally exciting same weekend is the trip for Vocal Point to the national finals in New York City. And if we could just really quickly pause for the board, this is a phenomenon. This Howling's worth toffee is. Everybody back there, you need to get some, I'm just saying. Just want to point this out to the board. Oh, hey, send it around. Just so you know, just so board members know, everyone in the state is being hit. These are FOIA requests that are being generated from some kind of AI bot. And different, some law firms are advising, don't respond. Some law firms are simply advising, respond by saying, you know, are you human? Who are you? It doesn't seem to have a human requestor. We are simply responding, Stephanie and I put together response. All of that information is public record. And we're just every time I'm on, I'm already on ACB number 11. And, you know, I might stop responding and see what you, you know, let the Attorney General come and speak to us because I have a little, little bit of a feeling that if you respond, you're going to keep on getting FOIAs. I might just stop. But all that kind of annual expense data can be found on a state site. So not sure what this is, but it's just kind of a curious thing that school districts all across the state are dealing with. It is, it's an email FOIA, but it's generated by an AI engine. All right, just a couple things we'll get down to business on. A few things just to mention while we're here, while we're in the room. One, when I, she was here, she was outside Jeanette Castillo, I think has done a really good job in the past week in a couple of different public relations venues. One, really helping Vocal Point. ABC seven did a story last Thursday night on Vocal Point. WJOL did a story Friday afternoon on Vocal Point. The Wednesday, the 23rd, before they take off for New York City, they're going to do a live ensemble performance on CBS two. And a lot of that has been Jeanette Castillo and her connections working overtime. And also a number of you saw a really interesting story. We had CBS two out here for about two and a half hours the other day, really digging into the potential of impact of federal funds. We've seen the first round of that discouraging for some of our colleagues, but the current federal government has suspended to Illinois Public Schools $77 million in ESER funding. That was COVID era funding that was stretched out. Our strategy working together was to end our ESER spending when ESER ended, September 30th, 2024. Districts, if they filed a plan, could spend it into the future. And unfortunately, currently districts that have done that, the districts that have spoken for that $77 million and planned on it, that has been suspended. And there's no sign that that ESER funding is going to be coming to those, to those schools. You know, the next round that people are, and that comes with, you could only get that funding if you make it through an inventory of DEI practices in your state. And so there's a next round that we, many people are expecting, and this is what CBS two is exploring of other funds, Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Carl Perkins, CTE idea that might get tied up in what's going on with the US Department of Ed. So just really a pleasure to talk to, they went very in depth onsite. Did a great job and really appreciate Jeanette Castillo, you know, spotlighting our school, doing, doing just a terrific job. I want to turn to two things really quickly, just to remind the board and anybody watching in the public. We do have the results of the consolidated election. I personally appreciate everybody who, who won. We have a set of, I mean, who ran. And we have a set of unofficial elected winners. We've already started that process. Yesterday I emailed out to, we have literally six elected board members. Some of the things that are coming up, it's a relatively fast tempo of training and events and things that the new board will need to get on top of. And that's not even the busy season that we'll hit after July one. Our seating of board members will be May 5th. And that'll take place right here, seven o'clock. I don't anticipate that the current board will need to have a closed session. You never know. Typically what happens is the current board will convene. You do have to approve, for example, your minutes from this meeting. There might be another issue, an old business issue that you need to address. That's also typically customarily a time when board members who might be rotating off the board kind of take a moment to say whatever is on their minds, highly appropriate for the current board to kind of own its, own its space. So I'd encourage anyone who has it on your mind, a perspective you want to share publicly. And then we adjourn what's called signi die. Signi die is just a Latin term for the, for the final time. And then we reconvene with the new board, swear, swear members and elect officers. It's generally, you know, more of a photo op than anything else than, than real business. Any, any election questions that I can answer for the board?
Real quick.
Yeah.
For the applicants, for the student board positions.
For student board positions.
Who's going to be like interviewing them? Would it be the new board or would it?
It will be the new board, Avery. Really good question. So, and the reason why that fits is because those, those will be their student board members, right? So they'll be in the selection process. You know, one of the things you could give us some feedback right here, right now on that, that application is out. Last year, what we did, what we, what we were not able to accomplish in the first year is we did the interviews before school was out. And we thought that was helpful because then you get into the summer and people are on vacation and they're on camps and board members are busy too. So I hope that was a helpful thing last year.
It was.
Right? And then also, you know, we spent a little time in the summer getting ready for your role in August. And I, I thought that was particularly helpful too.
It was really nice and we got to meet with the other board members or the previous board members. We went out to dinner with them and we spoke to them about like what would be the up and coming year, what, what was to be.
I also think for, for, for a new group of seven, and I don't say new because I know there would be some veterans there. But anytime you have a, you know, even one new team member on a team, you're a new team. I think it'll be quite a nice project to interview some of the best students in our school, to kind of get to know them, to make a selection among them, to introduce yourself. It's a nice, nice first project for a board. All right. We wait, I think it's April 22nd, maybe the official results, the canvassed results come out. If I could have Neil and Peter Pontorelli come on down. And there's a little green button that you just, I mean, a little push button and it hits a green light. This is the final of our bid packages for work this summer, and this is only work this summer. And then the second thing I'm going to have to, Stephanie Corry do is update you where we're at in, in our bond sale, just so you know, know where we are. But really, I, you know, I asked Neil to come and Peter to come to answer any questions before you approve this final bid package. This is the largest bid package. This is the exterior work, the exterior envelope work this summer on Central. One of the things that you might notice is that the successful bidder is Burgland Construction. And that is because in the contract that we have with Burgland, as our construction managers, they can bid on projects that they can, the term is self perform. So you might remember last summer that a significant amount of work that was done at Central was exterior envelope work, and that was done by Burgland. We know their qualifications because they executed that job last year as well as the interior ceilings. But all the shoring on the north side, the 1928 section of the building, that was a project that, that really Burgland did as a construction company. They're here, if there's any questions you have about this bid, about the scope of this work.
What was the estimate?
The estimate was $3 million, I think $286,000 was our, was our budgeting. And then, and I'm sure the, the low bid was Burgland at $3 million, 150,000. So slightly under. There were two other bidders. I apologize, I don't have the exact numbers, but it was 3.5 and then 5.2, I believe, were the other two.
I just have one question, maybe just for the public in general.
Sure.
What, what process do you have in place to ensure fair competition as it relates to quoting yourself?
Yeah, so first and foremost, legal requirements means that we have to post this legally. So we worked with Lockport District to make sure that the notice was out to the public. And then we made sure that the bid documents were accessible to whoever asked for them. So we provide that information. Whoever asked by email, phone, however that correspondence happened, we were, we provided either a link or the specifications and drawings to them directly.
Well, internally, between your team onsite and the estimating team?
So I, I think the way you're wording that question is between the two divisions. So we have two divisions, the building division and then a restoration division, which was the bidding masonry contractor. We are separate, so I actually don't work for that division. I'm part of the building division. And then as you guys have met, I think Greg Garland, Director of Preconstruction, who is the name and email address, who was on the legal notice to the public, is part of our preconstruction team, who is strictly building division. So we are two separate entities.
And, you know, another component of this is, you know, Peter Pontorelli from DLA. DLA does all the architectural design that, that goes into the plan that bidders have to, have to meet, all the specifications. So that specification comes from one architect, it goes to anyone who's bidding. All of those successful bidders have to be able to meet those design specifications. So it's where this sort of triangle of architect, owner and construction manager, I think really works, you know, to your question Lance, of keeping things, you know, even, keeping things clear, keeping bidding clear. I think one of the integrities of the bidding process is that you did have three bidders. Because sometimes within the business, my experience is that this is a contract probably that other companies know that Burgland has some expertise at this and might shy away from bidding, but bid anyway. So that tells you that, you know, the process is a pretty, pretty solid bid process.
And one of them was close to the price.
Yeah, very close.
And my understanding, Peter, the DLA actually ran the opening of the bids, correct?
Right.
Or, or did Mr. Thompson do it?
I was not at the bid opening.
No, DLA did.
It was, yeah, it was Bill and Eric. Yeah, DLA on board opened them consecutively.
That's probably an important point, right? It's publicly open, they're all open at the same time.
Correct.
Yeah.
I will say, working with Neil, he was very sensitive to that fact, keeping things separate and keeping things fair. So it's very nice to see.
And then also for the public to know about these other two contractors that didn't get the bid. I'm sure they have access then to your, to the Burgland, you know, bid also to see like what, what are they doing differently or what was it or not?
We don't provide it in our estimate.
Okay.
We, they do get.
But this is after the bid opening?
Correct.
This is, okay.
So after, after the, after the bid opening, they are, they are legally entitled to know obviously what we bid. But we wouldn't provide them with the details of that bid, I guess, like how that number's arranged. Correct.
And just remind everyone in the public, you know, you have a responsibility to take the lowest responsible bidder. So in this particular case, that was, was Burgland. And, you know, this is six big packages and you'll probably notice the members of the public will notice that Burgland did not bid in areas it doesn't have expertise. Didn't bid on roofing, didn't bid on electric. You know, not areas that Burgland might self perform, so. I also think this might be a really good question. This is probably the last, last time we'll, you know, unless the board requests it. You know, formally have, have Neil and Peter here before we really get into it this summer with approving this bid package, that the tempo of things is really going to pick up quite a bit to get this project done. So it's just a good chance in general for all six of these, you know, work this summer, how that's going to go, any questions that might linger for you? You know, Stephanie will explain where we're at with the bond sale, that's moving forward. But just any questions for these gentlemen, anything that you're thinking about this summer.
What's first out of the gate?
So right now, the process is getting our submittals and product information over to DLA to confirm so we can order and procure the roofing. As well as the steel lintels will be a lead item that we need to make sure we, that we jump on because we're golfing eyes and all the steel. So that's going to add a little bit extra time. And then we have got to make sure that the decking drawings are submitted and proper before we order decking. So really it's documentation at this point, confirm the materials that we're going to be ordering. And then once DLA gives us the, the review, then we will order the materials.
But as far as live construction, are you planning on doing the roof first and repairs of the decking?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So it'll be, so there will be a phase process to the roof. So we have essentially a drawing from the structural engineer that shows us what and how much decking we can remove at one single time in order to provide an integrity to the existing structure. So we're going to follow that phasing plan. We'll, we'll have two, well, field, two field crews on the roof as well as we will be starting the masonry. So it'll all go on concurrently. And that was something I was kind of very clear in my bid walkthroughs to all the subcontractors that when we're shoring up the walls and roof for the masonry package, that you're actually be able, you know, administering a live load on that roof because the roof is going to be pulled off as well. So June 2nd, and potentially even maybe a little before, we might be trying to get some materials onsite a little early while students are still in session without disturbing them. But essentially what I'm looking at is roof and masonry scopes of work starting immediately, June 2nd.
That was a question I had when I was reading through the, the bid package. I don't, my computer's flaking out, so I can't look at it. So I'm going off memory, but it did sound like some of the masonry work was going to go at the same time as, of what I remembered from the roofing stuff. So I, that's just good to know and good to hear that it's happening at the same time.
Yeah, the, the, I think the point that I wanted to make, make clear to my subs is that essentially the masonry contractor is that when you are scaffolding, putting your scaffolds up and shoring what would be the roof so we could take out the lintels, you're also making sure that things on the roof such as loading, we, we wouldn't overload it because you don't want to, you know, kept to have the roof be too loaded in certain sections. But we want to make sure it's clear that they understand that there are people working on that roof that we're actually supporting at the same time. So it's just something that we want to be mindful throughout the process.
So that, that'll be extra sturdy.
Exactly. Yeah. So, so what, what we'll end up doing is the, this, we'll have an engineer actually detail out. And what we do is we use needle beams that'll kind of go through the exterior of the wall that'll actually hold the roof up. And then the load will go down to the ground level. You'll see the scaffolding going all the way down the ground. And then as well as on the inside, you'll see scaffolding going down third floor, second floor, first floor to go down the slab on grade. So that roof essentially, rather than going on the exterior wall, it'll span on two different sections of scaffold. And that has to be beefy enough to not only hold the roof up, but, and, and when I say live load, live load won't be too much because it's going to be 16 men or women as well as some material. So it's not like we're adding too much weight to the roof, but I just wanted to make sure that was a crystal clear during the bid process.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
How is that impacting summer programming? Is everything going to be housed like it was last year over here?
It will be here. Like fresh start will completely be at East Campus. We're not going to have any, any kind of school operations this summer at, at Central at all.
And school administrators will probably be housed here as well?
They don't have to be, but, but might choose to be. You know, there's, you know, it depends. I don't even know if we've, we've crossed that bridge yet. So in terms of, you know, if you, anybody can occupy because it's going to be dusty, it's going to be noisy, it's going to be a lot of work is going to be going outside. I think they will want to be over here.
Yeah, initial talks with Bill Thompson is that everyone will vacate that building for the summer.
Right.
Okay. Are there any issues that you think based upon what's been happening in the state of the world that is going to, you're already starting to plan B, plan C for?
You can't say no to that question because you don't really know what's going to happen. But the fact that we are in the contract phase and that the subcontractors are within, holding the contracts now and executing those within the next couple of days. I think we're going to be in a good position once we get those orders in because this is when, when they receive their contracts, then they can issue purchase orders for the material. So really there's some risk, right? If a tariff or something of that nature would go into effect and something astronomical would happen. But I would say within the next week and a half to two weeks, that risk gets significantly reduced.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, thanks for, thanks for a great.
Not a problem.
Next up, you know, you guys are outstanding. Thank you. And we'll, after the superintendent report, actually approve those bids. It's going to have Stephanie Corry just tell you what's going on with the bond sale. She is working right now. I'm going to pull up a set of Google slides. They're very, very long. She'll explain what they are, might show kind of parts of it, but not the entire slide deck. And I think you'll understand why once she explains what's happening, what's going on with the bond sale.
Right, so March, the board approved the parameters resolution. And so then from there, PMA and myself and Chapman and Cutler all kind of went to work, right? So a big part of the bond sale is the, there's a couple of pieces, right? Somebody has to rate our bonds. We have used Moody's in the past to rate our, the rating agency to rate our bonds and we will be doing that again. So in order to get that rating, they have to do their due diligence and their work, right? So they have to, part of that work is interviewing myself and PMA on a call. So I have a rating call scheduled next Tuesday with Moody's and Chapman and Cutler and PMA. And as part of, as preparation for that, Bob Lewis and I have prepared this presentation. He drafted it, I cleaned it up and porterized it. Thank you, Eric, for the slide deck. The, it includes, Dr. McBride, will you move to the table of contents, please?
Right, I just want to make sure the board members understand Moody's is, is basically a credit rating agency.
Correct.
Chapman and Cutler is the specialty law firm that we work on, on things like bond referendums, bond issuing. And then obviously PMA Financial is the financial securities institution that would be selling bonds on our behalf. They'd be facilitating the actual sale of bonds. So just, so you hear Stephanie mention these different organizations, you know, if you have a question, which each does, you know, just, just ask.
Thank you. So this rating presentation includes, the reason I wanted to bring it to the board's attention and we want to actually show at least the table of contents in a couple of pieces is to see the depth of it, right? So the, the types of things that Moody's wants to know about is they want to know about the leadership of the district. They want to know about the, what is the debt that we're trying to issue, right? What, what are our facilities like? Because these are bonds being issued to do capital projects. What's the need? What, what, what do we do to maintain what we have? Economic data about our, our community. And that's requested because the majority of our money comes from taxpayers, right? So the community and its economic stability is important to a bond rating. And then financial policies and procedures is all about the board policies that you all have passed that impact finances and debt as well as what does our performance look like over the last handful of years? And then a future outlook as well. So then there's, there's policies and procedures as well as financial review. And then finally a timeline of what's, what's going to happen between now and when the bonds are issued. Things that like they look for, they will ask me about my background, my experience. They want to know about the superintendent's background and experience. They want to know about, you know, snapshots of our financials and have, there's explanations in here about what has happened and why it has happened. One of the things that they're asking about actually, as Dr. McBride talked about earlier, the impact of federal funding potential. That's a question they want to know about. They want to know, how does that impact us and is that a risk, right? So it's different than a corporate risk analysis because it's not a profit and loss information that they're looking for. They're more looking for like stability, right? Any questions about what they're looking for there? Dr. McBride, will you scroll all the way to the end? If you don't mind. So then the timeline, because we could go through all this, but it's just like going through treasurer's report data. It's, it's summaries of lots of things that you've seen, okay? So this is just a timeline of what's going to happen next. So what's not on here is the actual rating call because this will be presented at that call. So that was, so next Tuesday is the rating call. And then after that, Moody's will do, about a week after the call, they'll give us our rating. And then the POS is the, the other big piece that PMA and Chapman and Cutler are working on for us is putting together the booklet that has all this financial information for the potential bidders for these bonds. And that's the POS. It's the preliminary official statement, I think is what it's called. But it's literally a packet of all of this type of data. It includes all the economics, all of our finances, all of that kind of information. So the banks that will be bidding on our bonds have everything they could ever want to find out whether this is worth them buying, right? So that has also been being worked on and I've had to review that and add some information in it. So that, that's a piece at the same time. Then PMA will conduct the bond sale a couple of weeks after that, or a week after that, it's weeks in between. They're expecting to do a competitive bid process. So they'll, they'll conduct that for us. And then the bonds will close on May 19th. And the only involvement of board members, once it's closed and all this is done, is board president and board secretary and myself may have things to sign. So after it's closed and we have the final who, information, I, I will make sure Dr. McBride has it so that that can be communicated out whenever we have it to the board, right? I may know for that board meeting that night to be able to tell everyone at that time what it looks like. Something to note, we are selling $15 million in bonds, but the, the statement is actually going to show less than that. And the reason is there's an expectation they're going to be sold at a premium. So what that means is we'll receive about $15 million, but the actual face value of the bonds will be less than that because people are going to be willing to buy them at a higher price. Okay, so, so don't be confused if you happen to see somewhere on the official statement documentation that it's $14,700,000 something. Because. Um, because, um, Bob Lewis explained that to me about a week ago, um, that he's expecting that these will be sold at a premium.
And really, your action, you, you've already done on our seventeenth, you did what, what you had to do. And, and one of the things, you know, both for the public and for the board, that I would highlight, you know, you probably saw me scroll very quickly, but you saw the amount of financials. And this is no different than when you apply for a car loan, a mortgage, a home equity loan, this is the credit check. And, you know, I can't stress enough, and, and Stephanie certainly did. Financial health matters, because where it ultimately will matter is the degree to which the bonds can be sold at a premium, the health of the bonds. Um, when, when that, that POS is posted and banks review it, they're looking for a healthy investment, a steady investment. Steady investment income. And, you know, just, just imagine this, you know, we've had quite a conversation about fund balances in the past year. If you were going to loan someone money, would it be more attractive that they have a healthy cash reserve? Or would it be more attractive if they had a lower cash reserve? Ultimately, where that translates is that translates on the total rating that we get, the cost of these bonds to the board, the interest that you'll ultimately pay. And there is a margin enough there that, that could either help or hurt your abil- ability. To manage your debt service through abatement. So this is where the, the rating really becomes so important. Because it ultimately sets how much you're going to pay over the long haul for the cost of, of this loan. You know, the name of the game is to try to pull that cost down as much as possible. Um, so it, it's con- it's consequential, you know, in terms of how a board manages its, its fund balances.
Dr. McBride, you did, you made a, uh, made me think of specifically when I mentioned the section on the policies. Um, fund balance policy is one of the policies that, that they want to see, that the board has, a nice solid policy, then they wanna see. Um, that the board is being informed monthly of what that looks like, right? Are we, are we keeping to our policy, are we monitoring it, are we, you know, staying within budget and mo- having procedures in place? To monitor that and communicate that to the board vacation, those are, that policy and how we. Monitor that is actually one of the important things that they needed to, that they wanted to ask about, right? That's, the debt policy itself is another one and the investment policy is another one that they specifically asked about.
You know, and obviously these financial institutions, when they sell the bonds, they're, they're hoping to make a sale, right? When you hear Stephanie say that they're gonna sell them at a premium, right? They're hoping that ultimately investors are willing to pay more than the total value, right? So if you're gonna resale, resale an asset, that's what you would do too, right? Um, so this is where all this all comes into play. A- any questions for Stephanie or myself about what's going to happen next? And then obviously, you know, we've put in our five-year, uh, financial forecast receipt of these monies. Which will then be earmarked to make our payments over th- this summer and then invested to work for us the next summer. And again, those funds are restricted, uh, they're, they're not meant for any other purpose than what we declared we're gonna use them for.
Right, so the next things that you'll see from me, April twenty-eighth, you'll see a tentative amended budget, it'll have Fund Ninety information, the life save. Life prevention or fire prevention and safety fund, um, which is where these funds will go, once we receive those funds in May. Um, and you'll see that, you'll see those pieces in, so the tentative will have the tentative numbers. Once we approve, once the final is present, final amended budget is presented to the board for approval in June. Um, it, the, this will be a, a little bit of a piece of information for, um, the new board members, right? So what's gonna happen and the timing of this is unfortunate, nothing I can do about, right? The tentative has to be approved by the, um, the current board and then the amended, final amended budget's going to have to be approved by the, the new board, but. Um, the, you'll, you'll see tentative numbers and then final numbers, once I know what the actual sale looked like, right? And that'll include the proceeds we receive, as well as any premium, as well as any, um, and, and documentation of the fees as well. Because of course, PMA will get paid as this process for being the people that sell the bonds, Chapman and Cutler will get paid as will the, um. I wanna say broker, but that's not the right word, the other individuals, the other entities that are involved in processing the sale, it's kinda like your trust company and stuff, right? When you do a mortgage, but, um, so there's closing costs, of course, with the bond sale as well. Um, all that will be in the amended budget, um, as well as the, um, based on the estimate from Neil. Um, Burgland, the estimate of how much of the costs we will potentially pay out by June for this summer's work. Which will only be a small portion of it because the bulk of the work won't start until June, so we'll have one payout in June. It just won't be this, the, you know, it'll, might be some of the materials and things, right? Um, but it won't be all of the work, the rest of that will be in the next year's budget, which you'll see a tentative budget for next year in July. So that's all of the pieces and then once we do receive the funds, you'll also see that PMA, the funding has to be set up in a separate bank account. So, um, there will be a separate bank account set up for these proceeds and they will be invested separately from all our other investments. So you'll see, um, Fund Ninety having investments that are strictly for this purpose. Um, and, and any interest recorded, we'll have those scheduled out so that hopefully they match the tentative schedule. That we are expecting for payouts, it's all estimates, of course, so hopefully we can time it well.
Final issue on this is not to forget, you know, your May twentieth resolution, you know, you had one leg of the stool was last summer. Another leg of the stool, um, was what you've approved here, fifteen million dollars in bonds. You know, one project, two summers, and the third leg of the stool was looking at about ten to twelve million dollars in fund reserves. To address some more immediate, immediate needs at Central, CCC, Lockport Academy. If you move those, what other spaces do you have to develop to accommodate, you know, for what you're displacing? If, if you move those as planned, um, you know, if you go right off the facility master plan that we have, what are the most exigent needs? So we, we are working on that and, you know, obviously that's also gonna straddle seating a new, new board. Um, if we follow our facility master plan and renovate along the lines that we anticipate underneath the main gym at Central. That's a project that can happen really at any time, independent of what's, what's happening at school, so that's advantageous. Um, because that, you know, timing, not just summer, really helps. Uh, we have some other areas that we'll, we'll probably preview on April twenty-eighth, start working with the new board on. Um, for that ten to twelve million dollars, as well as moving forward to the facility master plan for this building as well. So just when you end one thing, you start another.
Right.
That's it.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our approval lines, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the open session board meeting on March seventeen, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw, are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Garrison?
Yes.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the closed session board meeting on March seventeen, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Dr. Shaw. All right, roll call.
Thies?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Garrison?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the bills payable report dated April third, twenty twenty-five as presented?
So moved.
I can second that. It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Ms. Lopez Caniva, are there any questions?
I just have a quick one. Where is the soccer building?
Where is it?
I saw that too. The soccer building.
It is, you have to kinda go sort of about a half mile southeast.
I'm picturing a soccer field.
Yeah, it's two soccer fields, there's a, um, masonry, uh, small low building out there that services those two fields.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. It looks like a little woodshed, but it is.
Okay.
Okay. All right, it's already been, um, motion second, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Garrison?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the proposal for financial audit services for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five through. The year twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Garrison and second by Mr. Thies, are there any questions to that?
Uh, I have a couple.
Sure.
Um, so the auditing firm we've used, um, a few times already, right? So how many years have we been using that firm?
Uh, Caston Smith, more than six.
Okay.
What's your guess?
Uh, part ten, but I don't know, I'm sure.
Okay.
It's been a number of years that we've been using that.
Okay. And you like the work product and they, they work well with you?
Yeah.
They're, they're a smaller firm, they're very nimble, they're here in the summer, I think we get, um, very direct services from them. Uh, they're extremely thorough, uh, their audit report itself, I, I just think speaks for itself.
Well, the thing about the audit report is technically it's ours, right?
Yep.
Um, but they, they know our business, they can efficiently review everything and all audit firms do the same thing, so my background is auditing. Um, so, the thing with auditors is they all have to follow the same auditing procedures. Defined by the government accounting standards board, right, like, um, the government auditing standard board or whatever it is. Um, so. The, in the prod- and products are the same as well, so they're, they're asking the same questions, they're asked, they're doing the same procedures, as long as they have staff to do it. Um, you're gonna get the same work product regardless of the size of the firm or the cost of the firm. And, um, the larger firms will be more costly. Um, I worked for McGladrian Pullen, which is RSM, um, now, uh, mid-sized firm, but now big, right? Um, and it, it, they never bid on ours, on, or they never provided a proposal on our audit before because it, they didn't think they could be competitive.
Right.
Um, so yes, we are happy with them, they, they're responsive, um, they are thorough. So I don't know if you have any other questions on that, but.
I do.
Okay.
Um, so the partner, um, John. McCasko?
Yeah, Mcalesco.
Mcalesco, has he been the, the partner for the last three years too?
Yes, um, Jill, um, is the other partner, um, and, um, I think they were looking for another partner.
At this point.
But yes.
All right, and I only ask is, um, depending upon, sometimes you might wanna change up the partner, if it's, if he's been those. If, if it's been the same one who's been reviewing like multiple years. Okay, and then, um, oh, this will be on my first audit, so. You, we've always gotten unmodified opinion, we've always done all, okay. And then when do they start, cause I know that you have to, you'll present the final audit in October, right?
Yeah, yeah, the, so the audit report is due, um, October fifteenth. And then there's an extension period after that, depending on what we have outstanding, um, sometimes we have to extend. Um, so it might be report, reported to the board later, but, so they, they physically come out to do our audit in August.
I was just gonna ask when they do the field work.
Yeah, the field work's done in August and, um, some of that is done remotely as well because we share a Google Drive usually. And I upload as many things as I can as soon as they're ready, so that he can do a lot of the field work ahead of time. Um, the, the things that take the longest are actually waiting on things like an actuarial report for, um. One of the footnotes on pensions and, um, benefits and then, um, this past year, we were waiting on a, um, our fixed asset. Um, we had an appraisal done, cause every so many years we should have a new appraisal of all our fixed assets.
Sure.
Um, so we just did that this past year, so we were waiting on that report. Um, and then there's review back and forth too, between, um, preparation of the report and then I'm reviewing it and sending things back that I want them to change, things like that. So, um, i- it's usually done sometime between October, November, December.
Okay. Well, I, I think the pricing structure is really reasonable for the size of the budget and. And I think a three-year plan or contract is, is a good timeline. Thanks. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Hey, Luann, are you, uh, are you still on the line?
I think we lost her. Yeah, I just gave her a call back, Kathy, if you don't mind, sorry to interrupt that. Any, any other questions here?
Thanks.
Okay, it's already been motioned and seconded, all right.
Hey, Luann.
All right, it's, it's been motioned and seconded already, so just, we need a roll call.
Okay, Patton?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Garrison?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yeah.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes.
All right, do I, do I have a motion to approve the educational personnel?
So moved.
I could second that. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Ms. Ann Lopez Caniva, um, any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Garrison?
Yes.
Shaw? Sorry, did you say education support personnel or?
We, we jumped to item number three, so we're gonna have to go back to item number two. I was just gonna let you, you can vote on number three, I brought it up, this is Tony Lombardo, but we, we, we do have to go back to number two.
Okay.
So we're, we're on number two.
You, you, Mrs. Lopez Caniva, you called out number three, voting on educational support, so you can.
All right, so I have it here on my script, number two, so it's number three, okay, so I'm missing. Action item two. That's what I'm missing, okay, so, um, it's already been motioned to approve the educational personnel. So why don't we do a roll call for that?
Yeah, go ahead and finish that and then just go back.
And then go back, okay.
Candace, Shaw?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, now, um, do I have a motion to approve the, uh, approval for the masonry bid package six?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Ms. Garrison. All right. We got all the questions answered, so, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yeah.
Garrison?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes. All right, announcements, there are quite a few there.
Yeah, you just, there's a lot of events, it's spring and a public high school. Um, so lots going on, there's one up there that I did not see, which is April twenty-third, which is the top ten percent dinner. Uh, typically board members do go to that, uh, Kathy and I will talk tomorrow, make sure we've got new information about, it's a great event, actually. Just really nice feel-good event, it's our top ten percent, you find out all sorts of things, families are there, just, it's the beginning of award season. Sorry it's not up there, uh, but you see what else is going on, so, uh, quite a, quite a, quite a few things, uh, happening and it's there. You know, if there's anything you wanna attend. The big show is sort of the end of the year choir extravaganza, lot of show tunes, lot of pop tunes, it's a lot of fun. That's what I would say, and once again, because, uh, my daughters are ruining everything for me. I will not be able to attend because I will be going to a college graduation for the second year in a row on the same, at the same time, so.
Ah, darn.
Darn it, missing it two years ago, but it's a lot of fun, it is a really, really fun, um, uh, concert.
All right, um, that's it, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Ms. Garrison, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.